Okay, 7:31. I'm gonna call for meeting to order. All riders to the flag of allegiance, please.
Flag of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Patterson here. Anderson here. Conan?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Rumble?
Here.
Beleki?
Yep, here.
Okay, approval of agenda. One favor.
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain? It's you, Sarah.
So you can approve it then?
Huh? Okay, oh, that's right. So it's me next. Okay. We're ruling on the rules together.
I'll mostly listen this time, probably.
Okay, so now we have approved what minutes?
It was the March 2nd, right?
Yep, March 2nd, 2020.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2020 for the planning commission as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain on that.
Oh, yeah. So two?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay. So Main Street chiropractic relocation. So going from one side of Main Street to the other side of Main Street, one side of Holden to the other side of Holden.
Pretty much.
So that?
Yeah, do I need to say that? Sorry. I'm seeking permission to move my office from where it is currently to where the yoga studio was, Main State Yoga, between the pharmacy and We The People.
Okay, so that's, you were in C2. No, you were in office, I think. So office. So in C1, the chiropractic office is a permitted usage, so there's no parking requirement or anything like that, so you don't have to park, have a parking lot like you did before. So what are you gonna do with the rest of the building? You gonna occupy all of it, or you gonna?
Yes.
You gonna rent any of it out?
No, I don't plan on renting it out. We plan on getting another massage therapist in the office. I have currently one. So I plan on getting another one and then just having a little bit more space, especially right now with social distancing. I have two chairs in my weight room, so it'd be nice to have more than two. But yeah, we're just gonna have a little bit more office space.
You gonna retain the apartments upstairs?
Yes, they will be retained.
Cool, okay. Any other questions?
I have none.
No.
Do you own, are you buying the building, or just?
I have a purchase agreement with the current owners of the building.
I didn't realize the yoga studio weren't in business.
Yeah, from my understanding, they had planned on leaving prior to COVID.
Not hearing anything else? Motion to approve, or?
Sold.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead, here. Sign away.
Yeah, you get to sign stuff.
As long as it takes for someone else to do it.
Yeah, today's big.
You know, he spells when it goes.
You have to come soon.
Right here.
You up north this weekend?
We were, but we relocated there up north. We're now in Hubbard Lake.
No more hills?
No, we still the place there.
No big bugs?
Nope.
You're relocating everything.
I know. I don't plan on moving the house, but.
Okay, from one dock to another one.
Hello, I'm Darren Gross and I have a proposal for the village regarding property I own on the end of Teague Street. I want to extend the existing road approximately 400 feet with a cul-de-sac on the end and possibly develop four lots on the west side and three lots on the east side with two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac, or possibly three, depending on size, I guess. I think the lots on either side would be approximately 100 foot each, width-wise, depth-wise. I think they would, they would be a little bit variable, but on that drawing there, they would probably be 400, I would guess, 300 to 400 feet deep, depending on which lots they would be. I guess I'm looking for direction on whether I need to run new water in sewer. Obviously, I need to run that, but if I need to run water all the way from the main out on Main Street, or I think at the end of Teague Street, it's sort of a four-inch line, which I'm not familiar with, how big of a line is required to feed how many houses. So I guess that would be a question. Also, tap fees, if I did run the water in sewer line down there, I guess I wondered what the tap fees would be for each of the lots.
So if I could, this is just a preliminary meeting, so we're not gonna approve anything. So this is just kind of for us to get acquainted and for Doc Gross to kind of figure out where we're at. So did you get the reviews from Rowan McGinnis?
Yes.
So some of the stuff that you've asked, the water line is addressed in there.
Yep.
So kind of as we talked earlier, if you're gonna proceed, then we'll kind of get a little bit more in-depth and find out just exactly what we have to do. And then, do you have a planner or engineer working with you?
Yeah. John Monti from Anchor Bay area.
Okay. So what we'll end up doing, so that we can, that you or in the board, or you and I talk, we'll kind of, we'll do some preliminaries, but if you can authorize your guy to talk direct to our planner and our engineer, but then you get to put the bill of all three of those entities, it would be easier than if you talked to your guy and we talked to our guy and then came back to meetings. It was facilitated in speed and in money, if we kind of did it that way. But again, that's if we kind of get further down the line. So what you're planning to do, according to the reviews that we've got so far, is, because there's not very much information, but the preliminary stuff is, it's okay to do your project. That's pretty much what we were looking for tonight, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you guys said, no, this is an absolute no, I mean, obviously, and obviously, I'm not saying you're voting on it, saying it's a green light to go either. It's just.
No, but it just, but it fits the master plan. It fits the zoning ordinance. So that would be an R1A. And your lot size would, are, lie within those standards. So it's really just kind of extending the street, extending the water line. They do want you to put in an eight-inch main from, or yeah, an eight-inch main from Main Street, not just extend the four-inch line. As we kind of talked before, you can't go to the interceptor for the sewers. That's a good one.
Can I ask a question? Which may shut me down completely right now, but my initial thought was to try to put condominiums back there. I see too many widows and widowers that have to leave Armenia because they have nowhere to go when their spouse dies and they can't afford their home anymore. So I was kind of looking like that, or new graduates, or kind of a community there that would be, again, affordable and allow people to remain in Armenia. And then I know we ran into, is that a zoning issue with condominiums? I have no idea how that works. I realized, I went and visited somebody who had just purchased her condo over in Bruce Township, and it was just like a duplex. And the house across the street was just a little house, but she said this is a condominium complex. I didn't know that was how condominium can work. Like, you can basically state this as being a condominium, and then like Liz Duncan said, Fox Creek, there are all condominiums, actually. That somehow the builder, when he built it, went through, that was an easier process. So they pay their condominium fees, their association, but it's not operated like, you know, they don't get their grass mowed and all of that. Is that a possibility back there? To put, you know, maybe even individual homes, but?
You didn't ask that question in paperwork, though. To say that, my gut feeling is yes, but then that's a whole different process.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, how?
Or a different process, and at this point in time, we really didn't address that. So can we address that? Yes, but now we have to kind of shift gears and kind of sidestep and say, okay, what is it gonna take to do a condo project? So would it be allowed in that section? Probably yes, but it's kind of what you're gonna do with that condo association. With a condo association, you've gotta draw up a whole bunch of guidelines for that association after you sell it. So when you sell everything, then the condo association has to remain to oversee that entity.
Right, right. Well, so personally, asking you as a village of Armenia resident, how do you feel about, like, I don't know, is that even something you think there's a demand for? Do you think it would be a good thing to have, you know, a small condominium community?
Well, you're kind of small as relative, you know, and then kind of, you know, what are you gonna do as far as? There's a whole lot of variables to that. So you can decrease lot size somewhat by having some open space. So, and you might have property to do that because you've got the ponds. So Fritz was proposing something similar out by, well, Aife, if you know where that's at. Okay, you know where the arsenic treatment plant is?
What treatment?
About Franklin Street. Does it go out from Franklin Street? Like, if it just kept going?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In that area there.
Okay, okay.
If you go down Deepwater Street, past the DPW barn,
Right, right.
And then turn north, Fritz has the next parcel.
Okay.
So he was planning on doing something there, but he wanted the denser development then fit our ordinance, so we couldn't allow it.
The one you looked at, was that the one that's behind the ham pens over there, or the VFW in Bruce Township?
It was, it might have actually been more Elm. I can tell you how it.
Because I went and looked at that one when Fritz was, was focusing on, you know, I think it'd be a great idea. I think we do have some people that
Yeah, would like to stay.
Would like to have a.
That's too tight, Dave. That's too tight.
Too tight?
Yeah, the lots are too small.
No, I'm just saying something like that. I'm not.
Right, right now it's just an open slate, so it's whether we put, you know, seven or eight little homes up, but again, they're condominiums, or whether we put 10 or 12 back there. You know, if we still wanna, like, initially, I was thinking condominium, like buildings, like, that's what I just associate. I didn't realize condominiums could be really anything. He just has designated condominiums, so these little cute little houses or duplexes that she happened to be in, you know, half of a duplex. And I thought, that, you know, that fits the kind of small hometown feel. We're not putting up, you know, any kind of high-rise or anything like that. And, you know, again, our population is small enough. I don't think there's gonna be a huge demand. I don't think we need 20 places. But just, someone like, I could start naming widows and widowers, you know, that I just like, well, you know, do talk to the kids where, well, they got a condo down in Sterling.
Don't name my wife, please.
You know, so I, it just kind of breaks my heart. And I thought, here's.
That's a great idea.
Well, part of that property was approved years ago for senior citizens.
Right, when Terry owned it, that six acres, I think it was during Reagan, and then he was supposed to get all this grant money. He approached us then, too, about helping him put the road back in so we'd have access to our property. But then he was relying on a lot of grant money that dried up and didn't happen. And we didn't have the money down to put a road in either, so it didn't matter. But yeah, when he passed away, we purchased that property. So that's why we now own that Teague Street. So, well, I just thought I'd throw it out there and just say that was kind of my dream when, you know, cleared the property. And I was like, wouldn't it be great if we could build an affordable, you know, community back there?
So it's feasible, but you kind of have to get a little bit more specific on what you wanna do. So we can't tell you what to do. You have to propose to us what you want to do, and then we'll tell you whether that's okay or not. So I can work with you a little bit on finding out what allowable?
Right now, with some R1A or
Yes, correct.
Individual housing.
Yeah. But I think a condo fits in there. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, if we build individual houses that are condominiums, is that still following that?
Yeah, but I think you could have a attached condos.
You can't tell if that's a condo. By the way, the man. Right, right, that's what I went and visited her. I was like, wait, what do you mean this is a condo? You know, it's kind of like, um, well, I guess I was, maybe, I didn't realize that's how it was set up, that we bring you specific details and you okay it or don't. I was kind of hoping for more, like, okay, guys, brainstorm, what do you think? Like, what, if it was your property and you had this vision, what would you like to see back there? You know, a little more? Because I, I just, really, I don't have a clue. I just wanted to, you know, we have the property. We want to build, you know, lots, you know, we divide lots up back there. Why not make it something affordable that, you know, can serve the community better than just, you know, individual houses?
Okay, so according to zoning ordinance, two family or duplexes willing in R1 would be special approval. But I don't know if you did a condo project, what that would be. So special approval is a totally different animal.
So I guess, so would it, are you saying that if we wanted to go that route, we're probably dragging out our timeline and ever getting it done for a year?
If you wanna go that route, you're gonna have, it's gonna take longer because now we're forgetting about what we've already done and then sidestepping to something totally new.
How much longer are we gonna?
Well, another meeting, at least.
Oh, okay. But like, as far as getting a meeting?
So again, this is just a preliminary meeting. So if you have another preliminary meeting with, you know, then you've gotta have a direction of where to go.
All right. If every time we need a preliminary meeting, is it gonna cost us $2,500?
Well, now, so you have a review. So this is basically something totally different. So you requested a R1A. So then, yes, there probably, there's gonna be a totally different fee for this because now you're going into a condo thing. So then we're gonna have to have another review so that it's another preliminary review. So every time we go to the planner and the engineers, it's more money.
Okay.
So but as far as planning commission goes, our fee, which is not the professional fees, the professional fees are on top of ours, if everybody else is okay with it, I'd say that we just let this go. And so you get two meetings for the price of one. The third meeting is 50%. The fourth meeting is 100% again.
Okay. All these fees, I know it'll sound good to him.
But the professional fees don't have anything to do with that.
Your, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's just the village of Armenia fees. So the planning fee, or the professional fees, i.e. planner, engineer, and attorney. And if you do a condo, you're definitely gonna have attorney fees on your end and our end. Because like I said, you're gonna have to have a condo document. And that document can be quite involved in itself. Because if you do a condo, a condo is, you, you know, you gotta find out who does the streets, who's gonna maintain the streets, who's gonna pay the Edison bill? There's a lot more to it than just, here's a lot and you own it and.
Right, right, it's more involved.
Well, it's more involved in the beginning.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
An over $2,500 is given. You know, the planning commission fee is a flat fee. The application fee, I can't do anything about. But the additional for the professional services, you will give back what we don't, what costs we don't incur. So I kept X amount of dollars for the planner, X amount of dollars for the engineer. And if their bills don't equal that, then you'll get any excess back.
Or if there's an overage, you'll give them.
You'll get a bill. I wasn't gonna say that.
That was in the back of my head. I figured that, but that's, yeah, no, that's cool. That's cool. All right, well, and so definitely the fastest, easiest, most, least complicated, probably cheapest way to go is just dividing the lots and sell lots.
Well, I can make some informal inquiries. So again, it'll be a cost for the planner, but the engineer wouldn't have to really, that review wouldn't have to be redone. But we can research what it would take to do a condo project. But you're gonna have to come up with more information than a condo project. What do you want in that condo project? It could be a attached condo. It's gonna be a detached condo. How many units are you gonna have in each? So how many dwellings in each unit? Kind of what spacing are you gonna type to do? What do you really wanna do with it? Do you wanna do it as a senior citizen type thing? You wanna do this as a? And then you're gonna kind of have to come up with a density factor. So you don't really need the density, but you're gonna need to come up with how you wanna do your, the housing thing. So is single families, you know, how many units to a, or how many dwellings to a unit? Those things you're gonna have to answer before I even call.
And then when I have those specifics, it's up to the committee to approve or deny it, right?
The committee is gonna do nothing tonight.
No, no, I'm saying, in the future, if I say, okay, this is specifically what I'm looking at, it's up to this committee to say, okay, go ahead, or no?
Yes, 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 it is. So but again, we're many meetings away from that.
Right.
There's a lot more detail.
Right, but my feeling is we're at the ground floor now. If it's up to you in the end to deny or accept it, I feel like I should get your input on which direction to go to make that most possible. Like, why do I wanna invest the energy and say, okay, this is what I want? And you're gonna say, no. I was like, okay, well, what would you okay?
It's kind of like going to the court system and asking them legal advice. So it's like I said before, it's not up to us to tell you what we can do. I'll work with you a little bit as the planning commission chair, but I can't tell you what to do, nor can any other board member tell you what to do. You're gonna have to present what your ideas, and then we'll tell you whether or not those will work. And then once, then, and then we'll get input from the engineering firm and from the planning firm. And if you go to a condo, then it would be the attorney. So again, I can work with you, but I can't tell you what to do. So you're gonna have to kind of come up with your own plan, and then we can kind of go from there. So I don't wanna be in.
Just if you call you personally, not in the meeting, and say, okay, Ben, what's gonna work? No.
So Darren and I met a couple of times, and that's how you got the aerials to, you know, get the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I'm more than willing to help, but it can't do, I think, what you're asking me to do.
Right, right. And I, and I, and again, this is all new to me. I don't understand the whole planning commission. I didn't understand your job or not your job. And what I had in my mind was like, oh, yeah, we'll go to them and they'll give us suggestions. It's not my idea. And so that's fine, that's fine. I've come up with something that hopefully you like if we decide to go that route. And I'm trying to be difficult, but.
No, hey, this is the. And we aren't either.
I know, I know. I gotta give out.
We'll try to help you as much as we can. But again, we can't, you know, if police told you what to do and then it went south, then you'd say, hey, look, this is what you told me to do. Really can't do.
I guess I'm not waiting for you to tell me what to do, but just give me suggestions. Just say like, keep it under so many.
Go online, look at the ordinance book and find out what's allowable and how it works.
Okay.
If it's in the ordinance, I mean, then you're not guaranteed to get it, but you're very likely.
As long as I mean the ordinance, that's the start.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a really good guideline. And then you can, and it's online, and you can just look and see what fits. And there's a lot, so I think there's even a condo section.
There is.
So go with it.
A whole section strictly condos.
There are no condos in Armenia, right? I'm right on that, right? We have no condominiums exactly. Okay, I just thought maybe there's, now that I know condos can look differently. Maybe there's condos I didn't know about, but. Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, Doc?
Answer my questions. I'm glad I'm doing my job and I'm not a developer guy. I'm strictly what I do, I guess, so.
So what is our next step right now? He's to contact the engineer about the, no?
You have to decide what you wanna do.
Yeah.
So if Doc would adjust his thing, we go to step two. But now you've interjected your thing and we're back to step one. So it's really, you have to decide where we're gonna go. So there's a fork in the road. Which fork do you wanna take?
What is step two for his fork?
To proceed and find out if you're, so you already, you got the review. So I think your thing now is a cost estimate. You know, do you wanna do this? Are you gonna wanna, do you wanna develop that road? I don't know if, how far you've got with that. If I was you, that's where I would be.
Right.
I'd leave my cost estimates.
The engineer, I mean, he gave me kind of a rough estimate what it would cost for him to do his work. And I was saying about 60 grand. And one guy, the culto that put the roads in here, I talked to him, again, just as a conversation. And said, 400 feet, and you know, it'd probably be about 200 grand, but.
Well, then you gotta find out where the mains are.
Right.
And then, yeah.
Right.
And then, I don't know if, do you own property to the interceptor?
Yeah, I don't know.
So that, so you're gonna have to find that out. And if you don't have property to the interceptor, you're gonna have to get an easement to that property. So that's kind of where you guys are today. So it's really, I don't think it's our next move. It's really your next move to tell us whether or not you want to proceed and in what vein you wanna proceed in.
What's an interceptor?
An interceptor? Where you tap into sewer.
Oh.
Yeah, so you got water in sewer. So the interceptor runs along the creek?
Oh.
So you're gonna tap into that? So it's just, so again, that's in the review.
Yeah.
It runs along the whole length of the creek? The interceptor?
To the sewer treatment plant.
So you should own something along there? You own a bunch of that creek? Shouldn't it be, well, I don't know, okay.
It crosses the creek and stuff like that.
Crosses behind over branches, I believe.
Okay.
Do you own that?
Yes, I still own property behind the brands.
You realize there's only two of us, so who's you talking about here, right?
At least whoever lived there four or five families ago.
Right.
When he was growing up, I don't know those people. It's wack, so I'll school swag.
Okay, so any questions from the board? Any other suggestions or?
At this time, I have none other than what was in the report.
Dave?
No. Just what you said, you gotta decide what you wanna do and then you can start pursuing how you can get there. Could be one person wants to do one thing, then you could do someone to do the other thing. And you might wanna take that offline.
Why isn't my ways always the road less traveled and harder? I'm always going up ill, but all right. I appreciate that.
Maybe Robert Ross poems too much. They're road less traveled.
Yeah.
Chrissy, you got anything?
No, I'm good. I think Dave said pretty much everything I was thinking.
You weren't thinking much, were you?
Right. Just what you said.
Okay, so any other questions for us? So actually, you can talk to me or you can talk to Becky.
Yeah.
Either one.
I reckon that's just number nine.
I recognize his number now.
Yeah, you recognize mine, too, but this is a recording.
What? Yeah. Well, we appreciate your time, though.
Well, good luck, and, and, you know, I can't tell you, we can't tell you what to do, but we can help you along the process.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you. We'll go duke it out at home.
Yeah, don't do anything like that.
I know.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is public comment, so we have some public, you guys want to comment on any? Okay, so chair report, as I said before, I kind of talked to Doc Kraus about this project a little bit, kind of getting started, and then did talk to the Beavers about coming in and getting their paperwork in order, so. Other than that, that's my chair report. Anybody else have anything? Motion? Do a adjournment?
I'll need to do a adjournment.
A second.
Hey, new member, oh, that's right, okay, sorry, I should have done this right from the beginning. Okay, we have a new member, they're a level, so we actually found, so how did you decide to come on the landing?
I, you know, I have summers off, and I saw it on the website, and I, I fully expected to never hear back about that letter I sent, but you guys voted me on, and I have no problem putting myself to good work for the community.
We can't even remember what we had a full board, can we?
Uh, no, uh, no, it's, yeah.
I didn't, yeah, I was kind of, kind of...
We were really happy to see your, I'm on the village tour, too, we're really happy to see your letter.
Thanks.
We could say, yes, we're gonna...
So I just chatted out there, not knowing which way we'd go, and deciding that it's a good use of my time.
Oh, cool, okay, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, sorry I didn't do something at the beginning of the meeting.
That's okay.
So for all those months that I've been saying that we need a new member, we finally got one, so you're out of luck. Okay.
We got a ball, huh?
We do, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved, okay.
You go two.
Down?
You go three.
We can get through that.